Okay, um, let's start the township of Ocean planning board regular meeting. May twenty third, twenty twenty two. Amy, can I have a roll call, please?
Mister Dufelia.
Here.
Mister Duffy.
Here.
Doctor Fisher.
Here.
This is Close.
Here.
Mister Siano. Mister Weinstein. Mister Beal. Mister Edis.
Here.
Mister Badenovich.
Here.
Mister Carmenica.
Here.
And Chairman Di Benedetto.
Here. Salute to the flag. My pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
From which it commands one nation.
Into this all. But in the very essence.
Notice of the requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting has been satisfied. A copy of the notice has been sent to the Asbury Park Press and the Coaster and filed in the ocean in the office of the township clerk on August tenth, twenty twenty. It says, it says twenty twenty one. Is that correct or twenty twenty two?
No, that's right. That's when we choose the meeting dates.
All right, very good. Board policy, no new cases will be started after ten thirty P M. And no new testimony taken after eleven P M. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township of Oceans Community Cable Channel, Channel twenty two on Verizon, FiOS, and Channel seventy seven on Cable Vision. Resolution memorialization, deal thirty five land LLC, block thirty three, lot nineteen dot zero two sixteen oh three, highway thirty five, ocean amended site plan approval. Can I get a motion to approve these? This memorialization?
I'll make a motion.
Mister Beal, I'll second it. Amy, do the call.
Mister Dufelia.
Yes.
Mister Duffy.
Yes.
This is Close.
Yes.
Mister Beal.
Yes.
Mister Edis.
Yes.
Mister Badenovich.
Yes.
And Chairman Di Benedetto.
Yes.
Okay.
Next is the two amendments to the ordinance. The first one, the amendment to the ordinance number twenty three eighty seven, solar energy systems. Do we need to have a? Any discussion on this?
No, you, you, you just need to do, oh, Mister Chairman, all you need to do is make a finding that it's compliant with the master plan, which it is.
I'm making a motion to say it's compliant with the master plan. Can I get a second?
I will second that.
Amy?
You can do that by voice. If you want to do that by voice, so you can.
How about if anyone's not in favor, say?
You just say all in favor.
All in favor.
I.
I.
Anyone opposed? There are none.
Okay. Amendment to the ordinance number twenty three eighty nine, electric vehicle supply service equipment. I feel like is compliant with the master plan. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, very good. Mister Lexine, you're making it much faster for us.
I'm trying.
All right, new case. Is it, I Dan? I Dan Koresh. Block four, lot three forty four Whale Pond Road, Ocean Zone R four. This is an application subdivide in existing forty three thousand three hundred and seventy one square foot parcel of land into two lots, demolishing three dwellings and create two variant, two vacant building lots. Variances are needed for minimum lot width on one of the newly proposed lots. Attorney for the applicant is Thomas Hirsch. Mister Hirsch.
Yes.
How are you? I would like our professionals to speak first, and then maybe you can address their concerns, and then we can put it to a vote.
Yeah, Mister Chairman, if you may, though, let me just mark in the exhibits.
Oh, sure. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Exhibit A one is going to be the survey of the property. Exhibit A two will be the minor subdivision plan. Those are the only exhibits I have from the applicant. Exhibit B one, as in board one, will be the board engineer's report dated May twelfth to twenty twenty two. Exhibit B two will be the board planners' report of May thirteenth, twenty twenty two. Exhibit B three will be the traffic safety officers' report of April seventh, twenty twenty two. And exhibit B four will be the crime prevention officers' report dated April twelfth, twenty twenty two. Those are all the exhibits, and I'm sorry, Mister, Mister Chair.
Don't worry. Mister Higgins, would you like to start?
Let me swear in Mister Higgins and Mister.
You, you, you're muted, Mister Higgins.
Okay, do, do all the boards professionals swear that any testimony they're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self and God?
I do.
I do.
Thank you both.
Okay, now summarize, it's a forty three thousand three hundred and seventy one square foot lot. It's currently occupied by three dwelling units, so it's substantially nonconforming in terms of the use, because only one dwelling unit is permitted on the lot. So you have three, so it's nonconforming. The lot is more than four times the minimum area permitted in the R four zone. Ten thousand square feet is required, and it's forty thousand, forty three thousand square feet. The two lots are that are proposed are twenty one thousand six hundred and eighty five square feet, which again are each is more than double the minimum area that's required, but that's required by the ordinance. The lot width that's required is ninety feet. Both lots are noncompliant with regard to lot width. One is a little over eighty feet, and one is a little over seventy nine feet in width. Otherwise, all other requirements of the ordinance are met. It's, in my opinion, it's a substantial improvement over the existing conditions. The one issue, and I think I will let Ben handle this, is whether or not there are some wetlands in one corner of the site that could impact development on the site, and I will turn that over to Ben.
Hi. Ben?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Yes, my report indicated that there are wetlands shown on the NJDEP GeoWeb website. And the applicant submitted a an environmental report in, I guess, to discuss that, and I'll let the applicant talk about that themselves, but I have reviewed the report, and I do agree with their findings. And that was basically the, all of my report. The other issue I noted was that the buildable lot area might be impacted by these wetlands, and I believe the applicant has addressed that, but I'll let them speak to that. Oh, I'm sorry. And one more thing was, was I wanted the applicant to talk about the timing of the building demolition. There are building, three buildings on the lot, and the subdivision will put a line right through the building, some of the buildings. So we just have to make sure that those buildings are removed before the subdivision is perfected, so that it doesn't create a variance or an approach.
All right, Mister Hirsch.
Good evening. Thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Higgins and Miss Malak have pretty well covered it. You know, we have this existing situation that's longstanding with these three, essentially, there've been three rental units, three dwellings on this property for many, many, many years. And as noted, we simply want to divide this substantially oversized lot into two also substantially oversized lots for the zone for two single family homes. So there's a lot of good. I don't believe anything bad. So the issues raised by Mister Matlock, we will have our engineer cover. As we said when we saw his report, I had inside engineering send me over the study they had done back in June of twenty one, and which Mister Matlock has referred to. And we will discuss that. So what I'd like to do is call our engineer, Yarmy Patash, Badish, I'm sorry, I'm saying that wrong, because I'm getting my clients' names mixed up as our engineer. And he'll go through the wetlands issue and touch on a couple of other issues, and I will then direct myself to the question of the demolition when that will occur, which quite frankly, you'll, as you'll hear, will be almost immediately, because currently all the dwellings are vacant. So with that, I'd like to call my witness.
Mister.
Swear I'm in.
Swear in.
Mister Patash, do you swear any testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self and God?
I do.
And you are a licensed engineer, state of New Jersey?
Yes, correct.
My license is current. Great. Go ahead, Mister Hirsch.
You don't need me to further qualify him then?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jay, you want to, you prepared the, or your firm prepared the subdivision map that's before the board this evening, correct?
Correct.
And you're familiar with the site?
Yep.
Okay. You, you've heard the issues we discussed in the engineers' report in earlier today. Would you just, again, for the record, give a brief overview of what's there, what's proposed, and then direct yourself to the alleged or potential wetlands issue? Go ahead.
Is it okay if the host could elevate me to present, and I can share my screen?
Right, everyone, share that. You want to share the screen?
Yeah, if that's okay with you guys.
Amy, can you take care of that?
Yes, I did. You should be getting a notification.
Okay.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Okay, do you guys have a screen available now?
Yes.
All right, so just to get everyone situated, this is just the tax map for it. Our property, it's forty four Whale Point Road. It's block three, I'm sorry, block four, lot three. It's a rather large one right here.
And Mister Patash, let me just mark this in, since you're showing this. This is exhibit A three, which is a tax map of the area.
Yep, tax map sheet seven.
Thank you.
So the property is a one acre site on Whale Point Road, strictly south of lot four, which was recently subdivided. As you can see, it's rather large compared to the neighboring properties. In fact, it is one acre property. It's an interior lot with about a hundred and fifty feet of frontage on the public road. It's in the R four zone, which requires a ten thousand square foot lot, so we're in fact over four times the required area for this property, for this zone. The property is irregular shaped, and the fact that it's a trapezoid, the front lot line and the rear lot line, there's approximately a sixty six foot difference, where the rear lot line is much larger. And I'm going to switch over now to the site plan. Or I'm sorry, the subdivision plan. So this plan has two views. The one on the left is the existing condition, and this shows the three dwellings that are currently on the property. So the applicant is proposing to do the subdivision, dividing the property right down the middle with two equal lots, both would be half acre in size. This is still twice what's required for the zone, but it's much more consistent and with the actual zoning requirements for this area. The existing property has three dwellings on it. That's a existing nonconformity. All three are proposed to be demolished, which would eliminate that condition. And then each of the two lots would have a single family home on it, complying with the requirements for the use. So we're seeking minor site plan approval, minor subdivision approval to create the two lots. No improvements are proposed at this time. Any future houses will go back to the municipality to review for approval and for permits. The current property has two driveways on it today. And in the proposed condition, it will still have two driveways, so that's not going to change. However, the location of the driveways and the curb cuts may tweak slightly to align with the proposed development, just to match up with the garage or wherever the house is located on the property. As I mentioned before, the lot is unique in the fact that it's way oversized for the zone. So by doing the subdivision, we're bringing it closer to conformance with what's required for the zone. And that's my opinion, a benefit for, for the town. The front lot line, it's measured at, the width of the property is measured at the setback line. So when we talk about the property width, it's measured at the thirty foot setback for the property. Right now, it's about a hundred and sixty feet. It's a hundred and fifty nine twenty three, to be exact, where ninety feet is required. With the proposed subdivision, both lots will be close to eighty feet in width, so we're only ten feet shy of what's required. And again, for exact numbers, lot A, which is one to the south, is eighty point one five feet. And lot B, the one to the north, is seventy nine point six nine feet for the, for the frontage. Both lots besides the frontage comply with the zone requirements. As mentioned in the engineering review letter, the state database for wetlands identified a potential area of concern on the northwest corner of the property. In responses, we noticed this during our due diligence. We had our environmental consultant go out to the property, and she's got decades of experience identifying wetlands and getting approvals to the DEP. And there are three aspects that she's looked at with the property. The soil, the vegetation, and the hydrology. This is done through soil borings that were conducted on site with the hand dogger, and she determined that it's not wetlands and provided a response, a report that states so. So we're not concerned about wetlands on the property, and that mitigates any issues with buffers or buildable lot area. So the full property is buildable. The site is located out of the floodplain, and it generally slopes from the rear of the property to the right of way. Any future applications for the dwellings will be reviewed in detail for, for grading drainage. So that will be, again, determined and evaluated when we submit for the actual dwellings themselves. And so this application is strictly for the subdivision. So in summary, we're requesting the subdivision to be approved to create the two lots. It'll be closer to the zoning requirement for the lot area, the zone, and it's going to eliminate the existing nonconformities of the three dwellings on the single parcel. And the two variances that we're requesting are the lot width for lot A, and the lot width for lot B, being approximately eighty feet where ninety feet is required.
Thank you. Mister Lexine, I note we, the report that's been referred to on the preliminary environmental study, we you know, after we got the report, we got it, Mister Matlock's report, we sent it over as quickly as we could. I think we emailed it over to Amy on Friday. I don't know if you want to, if you had that, we can mark it as an exhibit in the record.
The only, yeah. Yeah, Mister Hirsch, the only problem is the board has not seen that report. We, we don't have it. So it can be noted, I'll note in the resolution that the engineer indicated that he had reviewed a report, but, but the board has not seen that report.
That's fine. I just wanted to mention it for the record, and that's.
No, I appreciate that.
No, that's a fine, you know, he, Mister Matlock, I appreciate his acknowledgement, the report agreed with it, and our engineers testified to it. So with that, I don't know if my other, my client is E Tom. E Tom, you on the line? Anywhere? No, okay. I was going to have, Iden Koresh is the owner of the property. His brother, E Tom, is in charge of developing the property and with the driving force with this application. But I will represent at this point to the board. I've spoken with him today. The, the three properties are all vacant. There's no tenants in them at this point. And they are prepared to move forward with demolition, you know, forthwith. Okay, so whatever time it'll take to get demolition permits and set it up, they're going to move forward within the next month or so to commence the demolition of these structures. So obviously, we, as pointed out by Mister Matlock, we assume that, you know, would be a condition or requirement, of course. So you don't have lot lines running through the existing dwellings. So that was the good thing, that there were no, no longer tenants that we had to worry about notices to tenants and reviewing tenants from the property for, obviously, we could demolish the buildings.
Mister Hirsch, I have no problem with the board taking your representation to that back.
So I mean, that, that's essentially our, our case. I can make a closing comment if you want, or naturally, any other questions the board or the public has, just let us know.
Okay, I have a few questions. So my first question is from, for Mister Matlock. You indicated that there are some wetlands on the property. So how does it go from being wetlands to now not being wetlands?
Yeah, so the the wetlands are shown on the NJDEP website that has just an aerial with, with electronic, you know, delineation of approximate wetland boundaries. It's, it's by no means definitive, and anytime you go for a DEP permit, you have to field locate your wetlands. So in this case, the, the wetlands boundary did wish showing up in the right, back right corner of the property, and it, that's what triggered my, my comment. A field investigation was done, as, as they, the applicant's engineer said, and their, their professional engineer says that they did the investigation, they found that, that there were no wetlands on site. It's, it's not the board's responsibility to, you know, require the applicant to get outside agency approvals, if they're required. Any approvals that are necessary are, are the applicant's responsibility. DEP permits, you know, being one of them. So I, I'm comfortable with the board accepting this report by their professional, saying that, that they did an investigation, and they are certifying that there are no wetlands on this property.
So my, I guess, I guess where I'm alluding to is to, does this report bypass them going to the DEP to get waiver?
Yes, if, if you were to develop any property and you wanted to see if there were wetlands on site, you have to send your, your professional out there to confirm whether or not there are regulated areas on your, your site. And if there are none, then you don't need a permit.
Right, but, but I think, I think the chairman's question was if there appear to be wetlands, they would still have to get approved. They'd have to get clearance from the DEP that there are no wetlands.
I don't know how, I don't know how this outside report, you know, gives them a waiver. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Like, Mister Chairman, and Mister Chairman, you're a hundred percent right, because, I mean, certainly, anyone could walk, any engineer could just walk in, say, I don't see any wetlands and submit a report. So, so what you could require, if Bennett believes that there is a possibility that there are wetlands on the property, I don't think it should hold up this application, but you could condition this approval based upon a, a wetlands delineation being approved by the, by the DEP, if you wish. And I don't think Mister Hirsch would object to that.
All right, so this is the problem I have, problem why I disagree with that. I, I think what the engineers are telling you, this information from this website is nothing but a guess. This is not some determination a DEP has made in the field or any established wetland areas other than this aerial, you know, study that is done with estimates areas. And then what Mister Matlock is saying, and our engineer has said, how you determine that is, if there is an issue that needs to go to DEP is by doing the study that was done. It's not somebody walking on the lot and saying, gee, I don't see any wetlands. It talks about, you know, the three elements that, you know, create a wetlands issue, and whether any, there's presence of any of those. So the site investigation, you know, is very specific that the, that none of the three items that are characteristic and result in a determination of wetlands are present on this site. So when you talk about DEP, nothing is simple. Keep that in mind. It's months sometimes to get anything back from DEP. So here, we're suggesting to you and positing that the investigation by the engineers with a report reviewed by your engineer gives them confidence that, in fact, that aerial, you know, study, if you want to call it that, is not accurate, and there are no wetlands. Now, you might want to keep in mind that the area even under that is a relatively small area in the one corner of a lot, which, as you can see, instead of a ten thousand square foot lot, each of these lots are over twenty three thousand square feet. So anyway, I just posit that all to the board. We certainly wouldn't be looking for an LLI, the cost and expense of that, but the you know, if there was any issue, it would maybe just be, you know, a determination of absence or presence of wetlands, you know, but so we'll, you know, we'll do what the board wants us to do, of course, you know, but I just wanted to sort of give our position on that.
If I could just clarify one thing as well with it, if there want to be an LOI for it, because there, there aren't wetlands on site, if there isn't anything for the DEP to approve, what the online database does is, it's a first indicator that something that there's a potential for wetlands there, and it needs to be looked at more. So the next step is having an environmental engineer go out and delineate the wetlands that are there. And in this case, our professional went out and she did the soil borings required and looked for the three indicators and said there aren't wetlands that's, there's nothing to delineate. It's not like we could submit an LOI to the DEP for approval with it.
But to the, to the chairman's point, and, and again, I don't think the board has to do any of this if it doesn't want to, to Mister Hirsch's point. But Bennett, let me ask you, have you, are you solely basing your opinion that there aren't any wetlands based upon their report?
Yes. I haven't done, done a, an investigation myself, so it is strictly just the, the report those of it.
So, so the board could, it's up to the board, and it may not be necessary, as Bennett is saying, he doesn't feel it's necessary. And Mister Hirsch is, and his witnesses are saying they don't feel it's necessary, but the board always does have the right to direct its professionals to go out and, and, and establish the fact that the report's accurate. If Bennett has a step foot on the property, that's something the board can take into consideration, if this is something the board's concerned about.
I have two questions on this topic, Mister Chairman. Mister Matlock, did you refer and consult Ocean Township's E R I as part of your investigation on their report?
No.
Okay, so I, I happen to take a look at it. It does indicate wetlands in that area as well, so it's not just the GeoWeb website. It's also the E R I indicating there could be wetlands in that area. And I understand the engineer is saying there's no wetlands on that property, but my question is, does the report, again, since the board has not seen it, would there be wetlands that part of the property would fall within the hundred and fifty foot buffer of? Did anyone determine that if there's wetlands on the adjacent property, if part of the lot is in the buffer?
That would be a question for the applicant.
So the area that was indicated for potential wetlands was mainly to the north on lot four, which is currently developed at this point. Again, I didn't do the delineation or, you know, lack thereof for the wetlands that was done by our environmental consultant. I don't have the credentials to that, so I wouldn't take that liability on. I did visit the site, and it is the area of concern is on the top right corner of the property, which is also higher in elevation. So it's kind of a indicator to me that it wouldn't make sense to have wetlands on the top of a hill. The water's going to flow down, it's going to collect in a low point, and that's where we're going to have the wetlands for it. But I guess to answer your question, the our wetlands professional, when she goes out and she looks at it, she's going to look at the full area as far as within a hundred and fifty feet, that's specific to more sensitive wetlands. There's ones that don't have any buffer. There's also more typically a fifty foot buffer from a DEP standpoint. But I can talk to her. But I I can talk to her. I don't know if it makes sense to have a follow up with you guys after you do see the report, so, you know, we can tell you more detail as far as how far that delineation went.
Remember lot four, where there was some question, the adjoining lot was, I I don't think was that long ago, but it was a subdivision, granted, one of the houses into, I think, two lots, well, at least, at least two. One house is already built and another house is under construction on adjoining lot four. Now, that was, you know, you see the tax map, you see three and four together, two really, you know, oversized lots for the area, but four has actually been subdivided and is under development, so the tax map wasn't up to date on that. The tax map I'm talking about on the subdivision plan.
So I, you know, I have I just, I just find I would like it to be cleared up, whether it is wetlands or not. I haven't seen this report that, you know, that you have from your professional. I'd like to hear what other rest of the guys from the board have to say. Anyone else have any input? I guess no one else has any input. Jim, can I ask you a question? On 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 this property, I drove by there a couple of times. There are no trees on this property at all. How is that possible? That there are no trees?
It may have been there no trees for years. This property has been like this for as long as I can remember. And we've only had a tree removal ordinance in effect for probably five to ten years at the very most. So they could have all been removed years ago. But there is a requirement that there be street trees and there's a requirement that there be a minimum of fifteen trees per acre on the site. So that that should be any any approval by the board. That should be a condition of approval.
I agree.
Yeah, the site, I mean, that's going to be divided between two half acre lots, yes. Yeah, you know, that's what we said. We'll do it any way the board wants, but as a condition that any building permit sought would have to address, you know, any of the requirements for trees, obviously, the drainage. They don't know where the improvements will be yet. That's why, you know, we're not showing anything like that at this point. But certainly, we understand that that's something required eventually. So however you want to deal with that, I mean.
Mr. Lexine. Can we, are we allowed to ask the applicant to? Well, I guess you alluded to this already, that we could have Mr. Matlock go out there and walk the property and review the report. Isn't that correct?
You absolutely can, Mr. Chairman. If the board does not feel it has enough information this evening, you are not obligated to vote this evening. And you can have Ben go out and Bennett go out and do that and and report back at the next hearing.
For how bad that's just a condition, condition on his verifying that there are none as a condition, so we not coming back again for another meeting.
You could do that too, Mr. Chairman.
And just, I would like to add a little bit to this. I'm looking at an aerial of the site. I'm also looking at the Environmental Commission's environmental resource inventory. And I'm looking at an environmental resource inventory that my firm did back in the nineteen nineties for Whale Pond Brook. And what it looks to me like is that the state delineation of the wetlands, which is shown in the Environmental Commission's most recent July twenty nineteen natural resource inventory is based on vegetation. And when you look at an aerial of the site, there is a heavily vegetated area immediately to the northwest of the site. And I think probably the state, when they were mapping wetlands, saw this heavy vegetation and assumed it was wetlands. So it might be a good idea to have somebody go out and look at it, because the inventory that we did, which I am going to get to the Environmental Commission, they should have those original maps, shows that there's no wetlands within like three hundred yards of the site.
If that area you referred to is that lot four point oh one that's shown there? Where that heavy vegetation was to the rear of that?
Let's see.
That's the adjoining lot to the, that's the adjoining lot to the north, which is almost, it's a little bigger than actually this one.
It's actually behind, it's on part of lot four point oh one to the rear of lot four point oh one. And also extends to the west, behind the subject site.
Yeah, and the only point I raise that again is four came in for a subdivision, four point oh one, which was granted with two, at least two lots and one home built and another one being built. So I think if there's any issues raised, there was no issues raised on that, likelihood, as you can see from our lot.
It's a much larger piece of property also, Mr. Hirsch.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. It's one point, I think, I can't read that, four maybe acres, or an acre. All right, you know, it's up to you guys, obviously, you ladies and gentlemen, and what you want to do. I I think we, it's pretty clear what it situation is. You want to say it's a condition on Mr. Matlock's further review, and obviously, if he's not satisfied, we understand we would have to then do whatever we have to do. I mean, obviously, if any outside agency approvals required, we would get, our point is, there is no outside agency approval required. That's, I guess, what we're saying. If it was required, we're obviously responsible for it.
Mr. Matlock, what, let's say there is hypothetically speaking, wetlands there. What what is, how does that change this application? Can you please explain that?
Well, it would really just impact the buildable lot area. And depending on the quality of the wetlands, it has a transition area or a wetlands buffer associated with it. So the area, you know, the building envelope would be impacted. It's there still, even if there are wetlands on site, there still may be suitable buildable lot area for, to put, you know, to put a house.
Yeah.
But that that would be the impact.
Keep in mind, this lot is two hundred and forty-four feet essentially in depth. Will you see the, you know, the little rectangle? I mean, that's, that was just placed on there, you know, for graphic sake. The front yard setback is thirty feet up by Whale Pond. And the other homes on either side are all along that thirty foot setback. You're certainly not going to put a home in the backyards of the other homes. So you have a couple of hundred feet almost to play with, even if you had something in a corner up here and had a fifty foot setback. I mean,
Yeah.
The only point I'm trying to make, this is a, you know, ten thousand square foot zone with twenty-three thousand square foot lots we're proposing, so.
It's not going to affect whether these lots will be buildable. It would affect where the houses could be put and the size of the houses and the amount of impervious that could be put on the lots.
Yeah, for example, the the lot on the right is most likely the one that would be impacted if there were wetlands on there. And there there is an existing structure within the building envelope near the front of the property that almost definitely would not be within a wetlands buffer.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? I close the public hearing. Can I get a roll call?
Was there a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah.
Second, you can do that as all, you don't need a roll call for that, Mr. Chair. You can just do that as all.
All right, so we're just going to close, we're going to close the the public hearing. I would make a motion to allow the subdivision after Mr. Matlock, I conditioned Mr. Matlock taking a look at the property and reviewing the report of the wetlands.
I'd second that.
Mr. Defilia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Ades?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
Mr. Harmonica?
Yes.
Chairman DeBenedetto?
Yes.
Great. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. All your questions. Always a pleasure working with you. And we'll wait till here for Mr. Matlock. If there's anything else we need to do, we'll naturally abide by that.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Hold up one second, please.
Oh, Ron, always spoiling the fun. Come on.
That that's my job title. Mark, I don't know if you were in the meeting earlier on when I spoke about we plan on changing the ordinance to require two hundred foot and advertising for amended site plan where most other towns require that, although it is allowed by the municipal land use laws. I don't know of many towns that don't require advertising.
That is correct.
Okay, so I, it's your legal opinion that we should go in the direction of advertising?
Yes, without question.
Just wanted everyone to be on the same page. See, you know, John, I only took another sixty seconds, so I won't ruin your life for sixty seconds.
I I appreciate that. All right, motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
All right, see you in a month.
See you in a month.
Bye, guys.
Good night.